Roll out, which is going to involve some education for the public, some requests from the FUSIS company, probably putting out messages to the public seeking their support, seeking their cooperation with it, get them boxes for themselves to use, and that goes along with businesses. The camera project itself, with the cameras that we have, have been very effective, and we've had some very strong successes with them.
Could you be able to share any of that data with us at a later time to-
Yes.
-help us evaluate the effectiveness of that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Next thing I have to ask, I mean, $102,000 in ammunition. I know, you know, you guys have to keep sharp and you have to go to the shooting range from time to time, but, I mean, that cost just seems a little bit high. Like, how much of that budget do you guys end up using, generally speaking?
We use a vast amount of it. We do have some stock left in our training room area, but above and beyond our municipal police training council requirements for shooting every year. In addition with that, the officers are encouraged to come down. We do have a range right in the station. Proficiency with firearms is paramount in using them properly. So they're given the ammunition, if they ask for it, to continue training. The officers are called in off the street by members of our training department for five, 10 minutes, given a range gun, and allowed to practice during shifts sporadically throughout the year. And our SRT members also use a fair amount of ammunition. I have a letter also that kind of explains somewhat of the increase. So mandatory estimated minimum annual expense per full-time officer, nine-millimeter range ammo, 200 rounds, 5.56 range ammo, 200 rounds, nine-millimeter marking round, 200 rounds, nine-millimeter blank rounds, 200 rounds. Now, the costs for the 200 rounds for nine-millimeter is $54 per officer, 5.56 is $90 per officer, nine-millimeter marking is 136 per officer, nine-millimeter blank is 128. So the mandatory minimum amount per officer, estimated at 140 current full-time officers, $57,120, just to maintain minimums. We don't like to do just minimums in our department. Obviously, we like to stay above and beyond that and be very proficient at what we do.
You're shooting almost twice as much as is required.
At times, we are, yes, sir.
Does that seem at all a little bit excessive?
In my opinion, no. Not when you're dealing with something that is probably the most liability, most liable-causing situation an officer can get into would be a use of force of the firearm. I would prefer to have our officers proficient as possible, above and beyond the minimum standards.
But twice as much? I mean, all right, that's just me.
Are you all set, Counselor Wagner?
Well, are we, how does this work? How are we allowed to make motions?
If you want to tentatively cut it, you, we have to go all the way around then we do at the end.
Yes, okay, thank you.
When we do tentatively approve, you can, right before that, you can make a request. Okay, next up, we have Counselor Balakir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, thank you for your hard work. Question for you, page 44, incentives. I wonder if you could shed some light on that. Is something that, is that something that's still tied to the Quinn bill, or is that education, or am I thinking of something else?
It is both, sir. Some officers are grandfathered into the old Quinn bill, and some officers fall under the new education incentive program that we've offered for the past several years. So there's a difference where the Quinn bill was based off percentages of your base pay, 10, 20, and 25, dependent on your degree.
Yes.
The new education incentive, I believe, is $1,000 for associates, three for bachelors, and five for masters. So there is a difference between the two programs.
Okay, all right, thank you, Chief.
Counselor Kushein.
And also, if I could add in, Counselor Wagner, this may help. So there's an estimated amount per recruit to practice prior to the academy is $342, and that practice includes nine-millimeter range ammo, 300 rounds, another 300 rounds for the 5.56, 100 rounds of marking ammo, and nine-millimeter blank ammo is 100 rounds. So if we estimate 15 to 20 new recruits, you're looking, depending on how many recruits we get, $19,000 to $25,000 approximately, in addition to that $57,000 of the officers currently working. And then prior to the academy, just with us bringing them to the range to get them proficient, to be able to pass the standards at the academy, is another approximate $24,000 to $32,000. The SRT members' costs, now they are at the range even more than the regular officers. Their qualifications are more strict. 10 SRT members' mandatory annual cost, based on the same breakdowns of ammo, and also including 40-millimeter less lethal ammunition, the annual cost for that is $6,720. The total cost annually, to include what I just mentioned, plus other chemical munitions that we have to train on, $13,514. So if you bring all that together, the annual estimated totals in munition is 113,000 to 121,000, based on what we have already. And the cost of ammunition has gone up. I'd say approximately 20%, over the last few years.
Yep. Okay, Counselor Kushein, if you could just pull your mic closer.
It was off.
Oh, it was off, thank you.
So, I like hearing that you do bring them out to the range before they go to academy. Typically, the academy is a 50% failure rate. Would you say a lot of that, or some of that, is due to failing in the range day at the academy? Because I know a few people that have, so I wonder how often is that a reason for failing? And the fact that you're doing something proactive by getting them proficient before they go is huge, because it's horrible to fail all the, you know, everything you do and the one thing at the range fails you. Do you find that a lot of the reasons why the failure rate?
Not in the recruits that we've sent through, fortunately. We do have recruits that come in with absolutely zero firearm experience, and we give them a little extra time. And if they're struggling during the academy, prior to their final qual, then we can bring them in and give them extra time as well. So fortunately, the recruits that we put through, we haven't seen a lot of failures or dropouts due to that reason.
Excellent. Well, I appreciate the fact that you're looking proactive about getting through the academy. That's worth all the money in the world to have these guys make it through, and ladies make it through the academy.
Thank you.
Counselor Roy.
Yeah, thank you, Chief, for helping to make our officers more efficient at their job. It's very much appreciated, their firearms experience and training. My question is departmental equipment. Could you elaborate on that just a little bit?
On departmental equipment?
Yeah.
Per se?
Yeah.
That could be, that covers a myriad of things. That could be specialized items, drone-related. It could be other equipment, protective equipment, sometimes we have to order replacement batons. Let me see, duty belts, mace, handcuffs, flashlights, mag holders, range equipment at times, parts for our gas pump repairs, fire extinguisher maintenance repairs, motorcycle repairs, various equipment needed for our specialized units, the SRT, the dive team, our crowd control, and motorcycle units.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Counselor Costello.
Thank you, President Laflamme. Thanks, Chief, for all you do. Our neighborhood loves you. We appreciate your help.
Counselor Costello, could you pull your mic close to you?
Yeah, I got to, I got to.
Everybody's having a hard time.
For the microphone. I noticed that the care of prisoners has gone down as far as the expense. Are there less arrests now, less people being held on bail? Is there a reason for that?
Where are we at on that one?
The care of prisoners is, I'm sorry, on page 45. It was $2,500, now it's 1,500?
Oh, that's, that's correct. The amount has probably gone down, because a lot of times, we have a program now with Sheriff Coche, where if we have an arrested party come in, they're given an opportunity for bail. If they're able to be bailed, great, we can release them quickly. If not, they get transferred over to the Ludlow Facility, and they're held overnight there. So that negates a lot of the cost of having to provide food for them.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Also, does this budget reflect a full staff, or are you still in need of officers?
This budget is, the budget we're asking for is for a fully complemented department at 120.
Yeah.
We are still currently down. We have some members in the academy now. We have eight in the academy now, and we're looking to add an additional 15, which, if we were able to get without losing any more, would bring us up, hopefully, to the full complement.
That's great. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Okay, I just want to mention that Counselor Bob Zgarowski is here for the budget hearings too. Counselor Wagner, second time on the chief's budget.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, I noticed that the telephone expense has gone up from $14,023 in fiscal '23 to $101,000, and has sort of remained consistent. I'm just curious what accounts for that large of a jump in us keeping it there.
That was due primarily to, for a while, we had only a short amount of phones that we gave out to the officers. Now, everybody in a department has been issued a phone, and a lot of our work can be conducted by the phone now.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Counselor Wagner, I'm sorry, Counselor Balakir, second time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Chief, a quick question, please, page 45. Computer software, it's gone up more than 100%. It's gone from 136,000 to 286. Could you shed some light on that, please?
Yes, sir, that, that reflects the increase due to the FUSIS Real-Time Crime Center project, and the annual price tag for that is $150,000. That's where that increase comes from.
Okay, all right, thank you, Chief.
Counselor Goff.
Hi. I just noticed on page 47, on the Westcom expenditures, almost doubled. I was wondering if you could shed some light on that.
Counselor Goff, can you pull your mic closer? If people could just pull their mic closer, for some reason.
I'll do my best to explain it, and if I don't hit it on the head, Erin Hastings from, from Westcom is here.
Thank you.
So when the project started, the cost that the departments involved in Westcom was somewhat offset by, I believe, grants coming in from the state 911. So as time has passed, the agreement was that the departments would end up taking up a bigger share of the cost, and the grant would decrease, or more, more of the grant would go to Westcom at that point, and that's why we're at the, the cost that we're seeing now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, is there any questions on Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion. Oh, Counselor Wagner, you had two twice.
My apologies, I just had to ask one more question. I completely forgot regarding, is that allowed? I know you want to keep it running smoothly.
No.
I won't.
Thank you.
Motion to tentatively approve.
Motion made in seconds, tentatively approved. Roll call, please. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Counselor Wagner, you want, want to?
I wanted to make a motion to tentatively approve with the cut to the ammunition budget of $10,000.
Motion made in second, that we tentatively approved the police department budget with a $10,000 cut to the ammunition budget. Okay, we'll have a roll call on cutting it, and it's to be sent, and we vote on it. Just so the new, if the people understand, it goes to the next budget for our final, and those all come out at the end, and we vote on them then, okay? So if you vote no, you don't need, if you want to vote no, but it's, if I can explain it right, at the end of the third day, when we do the reconsideration, it'll be brought up then, and we vote yes or no on each one, right?
Right. What I usually do on recon night is I'll read every motion that was made in the previous meetings, and then they'll have the person that made the motion, and explain why, and then anybody else can make comments, and then they usually do a vote whether to-
That's when we do the final, okay? So is-
I don't know, have we done that?
I'm not sure we need a roll call on it.
I think we did, that's why I was wondering why we weren't going to do that.
Well, if you have people on Zoom.
Want to do a roll, did we do it before? I don't think we do roll calls on, no?
Not when the motion's-
Okay, okay, I'll say.
On recon night, we will.
Okay, we're all set.
You do have a couple people on Zoom.
I can't see.
Okay.
It's listed.
Okay, is there any question, before we go any further, on this one here, that the way we're, process of how we're doing it, for the new, we understand it, everybody? Okay, I just want to make sure. Counselor Roy.
This goes back to reconciliation, is that what you-
Correct.
Okay.
The final night, all of those will go, and each person that brought the cut forward will explain why, and we vote on each one of those separately.
Okay.
Okay? Okay. Everybody done? Nobody on Zoom? Okay, we'll go on to-
We got a motion to tentatively approve?
We already did.
Okay.
With the, we already did a motion.
We already did.
And I second it.
She didn't do a roll call, though.
Okay, roll call, please, I'm sorry.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zgarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
We have to prove the line item.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Shamsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Pinaya Costello?
Yes.
Twelve yes, one no.
And the motion passes. Okay, thank you, Chief, and your administrative assistant, I keep forgetting her name, what? Vicky, thank you, Vicky.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have up, we'll have the law department, page 25. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kevin Corden, City Solicitor. If you take a look at page 25 through 27, I think the only item that's really changed is my ask is changed to account number 538000 on page 26, an increase of $50,000 to my special services account. And the reason for that is, I think that $250,000 is about where I need to be to not have to come back next year and ask for further funding, based on the amount, the number of cases that we currently have serviced by outside counsel. I've tried to build in some efficiencies in how we deal with outside counsel, and one of my goals has been to not have to come back during the year, try to get to June 30th without asking for any further funds for those purposes. I may come back for settlements, or judgments, or for other reasons, but basically, strategically, I'm trying to reel in outside counsel and assign more cases to in-house lawyers. A couple of our attorneys are tasked with also policing outside counsel bills more aggressively. And that, that's about the only change to my budget this year, and if you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for the law department? Counselor Roy.
Yes, I have one question. How many of these counselors, these lawyers, actually work in our office?
Work in the office? Two of us are there regularly, the others come in for meetings, and I know Tim attends your meetings. Aside from that, they have private offices that they usually work from.
So it's just you and Jack?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, sir.
You and Jack?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Counselor Balakir is next.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor, for coming in. A general question on page 25. Do you feel that your staff is sufficient, or do you need more help?
I feel like our staff is pretty effective. I feel like we're a good team, and I take on a caseload myself as well, so I try to nip things in the bud before they get out of control, or, you know, pick up the phone when people call, and I feel like that's taken a lot off the plates of other lawyers in the office, and allows them to focus on more narrow focus, like litigation, or, one of our attorneys does licensing, and is also involved in litigation. So I basically take on the utility person role and farm out everything else. I feel like our staff is adequately funded, and I feel like we have enough people to, to do the job.
Okay, follow-up question for you, Counselor. I noticed you have two paralegals, so two paralegals you think is sufficient, or do you think you might need somebody else for something else? Or do you think that's good?
No, I believe the two paralegals that we have working for us now are adequate.
Okay.
I know that one of our lawyers uses his staff as well to supplement his participation in matters sent his way, so, you know, I think all of our resources are adequate right now.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. All set.
All set. Any other comments from the floor, questions? Counselor Costello.
I want to thank Attorney Gordon. His staff is always available for all our questions, and Attorney Riley gets back to us right away. Thank you, Attorney Gordon.
That's good news, thank you. I appreciate it.
Any comments from Zoom? Well, I'll just make a comment on behalf of the whole city council. I want to thank everybody for coming in and doing their, their job as they do a well job, if we forget anybody, so I want, on behalf of the whole council, we thank you for coming tonight. Okay, so with that said, I'll take a motion, tentatively approve.
Motion to tentatively approve.
Motion made in second, tentatively approved. Roll call, please.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zgarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Shamsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Pinaya Costello?
Yes.
Yes, one no.
And the motion passes. Thank you for coming in here.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Next will be fire department, page 48.
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
So some of the stuff we noted in our, our cover letter would be some increases in janitorial supplies that's just reflective of the market of what things cost these days. Our travel account has gone up a little bit as well. That's for attending certain classes for fire prevention office for ourselves and the, and the staff. The overtime has gone up, I believe we went up $100,000 on that account. And the special account for ambulance billing, there was an increase there as well, which directly reflects the additional calls that we're running. That's a percentage-based account. I believe it's 2.95% for each, each billing that's done, and we've increased the calls, so therefore, that's gone up a little bit. That's, that's about it as far as increases, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any, Counselor Balakir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Chief, for coming in, appreciate your hard work. Question about the overtime. I know that you mentioned it did go up. Could you shed some light as to staffing, which would maybe help us a little bit with that number, please? That's on page 49.
Certainly, we're, we're doing pretty good with staffing. Currently, we just finished interviewing and sent offers out to five licensed EMTs, and if everything goes well with their physicals and all the processes, they'll be working on the ambulance, which will be very helpful as far as overtime goes until they get into the academy. And we're, if those five are hired, we'll be at a deficit at that point, if still about six more, so the intent is in the fall to hire a few more to put into the academy at that time. And for those that don't know, I'm not sure if we addressed this in the letter, but the overtime, there are so many facets to it. Some of it is sickness, which is hard to predict, injuries on duty, injuries off duty, military deployments. We have two out for an entire year right now that were deployed, and also, there's some things that people don't realize, are the hazmat deployments for several of our members that are on the hazmat team. That actually comes back to the city through state reimbursement, but it doesn't go into our accounts, so the general fund, but it, there are quite a few things in here that add to the overtime costs. And the reality is, too, that at the end of the year, we're on track right now to return approximately $700,000 due to the fact that the eight or nine positions that are currently empty, so that comes back to the city as well. So it really, it sounds like a horrible number at first, but when you talk about those reimbursements, in addition to that, the ambulance reimbursements for the transports that we do brings quite a bit of money back as well, so.
Okay, all right, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Other follow-up question, please, on page 50. Special services, if you could just shed some light on that, please.
So special services, as I'm looking for it, a lot of that has to do with costs for, there's $4 per run that's paid to a fund that we're charged for every transport that takes place in the city. We have EMT licensing reimbursement comes out of that as well. I don't know, I have it in here somewhere. Yeah, that's $4 per transport that they charge us there. There is also $3,000 a year fee that goes to the medical director at Bay State Medical Center. There are overwatch for medical things. It's also reimbursement out of special services for when promotional exams are given by contract. They're allowed to be reimbursed for those tests one time, if they pass the test. So there's quite a few different items that come out of that account.
All right, all right, thank you. Now, I was just trying to get some clarification, so that, it looks like at least it's the level and trend, it seems that it's been fairly consistent at 90,000, but I was just looking for a little further education on it. All right, thanks, Chief, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Wagner.
Thank you, Chief. I'm looking on page 49 here, at this fire technician position. What exactly is that position?
Fire technician position?
Yeah, that's fire tech slash general foreman.
Oh, that's, that's the mechanic, the individual in our department that's responsible for taking care of the 26 vehicles that we have, fire trucks, engines, boats, now jet skis as well, and we're currently, we were out to hire for a second individual there too, because our goal is to not send anything out, do all the preventive maintenance in-house, and that's why we're trying to fill that position as well.
Awesome, thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Counselor Shamsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chief Stamborsky, for coming tonight. I just have a question, and actually for clarification, on page 49, badge number one, it says positions, that there's three of them, but I just kind of wanted clarification on that, what that means.
So that's a contractual stipend for badge one, being the most senior individual on the job. Back in the day, there was one percent, one individual that badge one, that got that stipend, so to speak. Somewhere along the line, they negotiated, it's the same percentage, but they split it up amongst badge one, two, and three, to kind of be similar to other communities. I believe the PD does something similar as well, so I'm not sure how long ago, but that was split amongst the top three at some point.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any comments from the floor? Any other comments or questions? Anybody from Zoom? Chief, I have a question on page, page 50, janitorial supplies. The facilities division don't take over your supplies right now?
They haven't yet, but, you know, this was a new concept with Dave Rice and his crew taking over all the facilities. They're doing a great job. We turned over a good percentage of our budget to him last year. Janitorial supplies and a small repair to, a repair amount was left in there for emergency things, such as the doors and the plenum vent systems, so that we didn't have to pester Dave in the middle of the night and get the ball rolling with that. But no, we've always purchased our own supplies.
Again, janitorial supplies is not equipment, it's, it's janitorial supplies.
Correct.
Because I, as we, as we had discussed when we started- Because I, as we had discussed when we started this position, is trying to get all that under him so that we get the best bucks for our money for purchasing the supplies. So I was surprised to see that, because I just asked her, I says, I thought we moved that into facilities to buy the paper products.
I agree with the concept. I mean, if we can get better buying power by returning that to Dave.
Down the road, that's just something we'll look at again.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you. You do a great job, so, as well as everyone else. So again, that's the only question I have. Does anybody else have a question? Seeing none, I'll take a motion, tentatively approved.
Tentatively approved.
Motion made and seconded, tentatively approved. Thank you, Chief, for coming in.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next one, we're going to do, I'm going to do it a little bit different. So for DBW, we're going to do number 99, which is the Department Administration. And then we are going to go over to 110, the Parks Department. Counsel Shumsky has to abstain because his mother and his daughter, sister works there, so he needs to abstain. All set? Yep. So we're going to do those two first, and you can do the rest.
Why would he have to abstain from admin?
What's admin first? His mother works for the Parks Department.
I know, but I thought we were doing admin first. Is that what you just said?
Or isn't she under the admin? Ben said she was.
She's in the Parks Department.
Okay, just the Parks?
Yes.
Oh, Ben, I thought you said she was in the admin, no? Okay, so you can stay for that. So we can go in order. I apologize, because I thought he said she was in the admin. Okay, thank you. So we'll go down and then we'll go from there. 99. Thank you. You have the floor.
Sorry, hold on one second. I know, but I like these better.
Just pull the mic close to you, please, because they're not, thank you.
So in DPW admin, the main, under salary line items, we had a change. I don't know if you are aware, but Chris Chabon in the Engineering Department left to pursue another career. And, but it's a real hardship on us. He has agreed to come back two days a week. So we are bringing him back as a part-time employee, essentially a contract employee, similar to how we brought back some retired staff. And so if you look at item 514055, that was increased to accommodate what he agreed upon for a contract if this were to be approved. So that would cover Stan, our current, one of our, one of our advisors, Stan Kulig, who's great, and as well as bringing Chris Chabon back on a part-time basis. So he would not be under the Engineering Department, but he would be doing design work and helping engineering with training the next Assistant City Engineer. So that's the biggest, that's the change in salaries. On the general expenses, we moved, as Counselor Laflamme mentioned during the fire budget, all of our janitorial and building maintenance for Baskin Drive has now been transferred to the Facilities Department budget. So you'll see a decrease in the admin line item for $50,000 under 524001, which is our repairs to building line item, as well as, I believe, 545000, which is janitor supplies. $7,500 also has been transferred to the facilities budget. And then a, under specials, under 521105, we've now moved about $30,000 for lubricants. We've moved that into central maintenance budget. Since they do all the purchasing for that, for that product, and it just made sense that rather than having central maintenance issue, a request for a transfer from, or PO from DPW admin, and to have us pay for that, you know, it was just one of those things, simplifying the process. So $30,000 was moved from a specials under DPW admin to central maintenance garages budget.
Okay, Counsel Roy.
Yeah, one quick question here, Liz. The DPW electrician, one-third, does that mean your electrician only works 13 hours a week?
No. So the DPW electrician is, there, our electricians are split between three departments pay for them. So because water and sewer have to be independent, so any, anybody who does work in those departments should be paid from those departments. So one-third of that salary gets paid from wastewater, and one-third gets paid from water, and one-third gets paid from admin.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Counsel Brooks is now on Zoom, and Counsel Labrie is off Zoom. So I have a page 104. I'm just surprised to ask why this. Pothole repairs, no more money.
Page 104.
Page 104.
Is that admin?
It's on the highway.
That's highway.
It's highway.
Did you jump to a different?
Oh, I apologize. I'll get to that with highway.
I'm like, wait a minute.
I'm sorry. I went one page too much. I apologize. Well, I'm just checking if you're watching. Thank you. Okay, any other comments from the floor? Anybody on Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion, tentatively approved.
Motion tentatively approved.
Motion made and seconded, tentatively approved. Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zigorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Balakir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Shumsky.
Yes.
Khrushain.
Yes.
Labrie. Pinia Costello.
Yes. 12 yes.
And the motion passes. Okay, then the next one up will be engineering? No, no, we're going to go in order since he can stay for that. When there was going to be two, that's why I was going to have him leave and not go back and forth. So he can leave on that one when it comes time. So we'll go in order. Engineering.
So for engineering, everything is essentially level funded contractual, with the exception of, since the Assistant City Engineer, we would be hiring, we wouldn't be hiring them at top step. So that salary line item was reduced to reflect, I believe, step two versus step four salary.
Okay, any, Counsel Costello.
Yes, Superintendent. So are you on full staff with the engineers now, or is there any shortage?
No, we are down to two. We have a senior engineer position open and the Assistant City Engineer.
Okay, so you're down two. Do you have, do you have any prospects in regards to hiring for those positions?
As of right now, I'm not sure that we have anybody, as of right now, for, as far as applicants, yes.
Like you're not interviewing anybody or anything?
Not yet, no. The positions are posted.
They are posted?
I believe, I believe so. I believe this, they are posted. Assistant City Engineer is not yet posted. Yeah, it's with HR. It should be posted shortly.
All right.
But yes.
Thank you.
Counsel Costello, you have a soft voice. This whole side can't hear.
My husband won't agree with that.
Sometimes I, yeah.
Not at all.
So if you could just keep, I'm sorry, just have it closer. It's really hard on this whole side to hear. I'll check with Tom later.
Yeah, yeah, check with him.
Okay, any other comments? Counsel Balakir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, so Liz, I'm sorry, as a follow-up, so Chris Chabon left, but he's coming back for, is it two days a week?
Yeah, so in July, once, well, once this is approved, this budget is approved, we can then sign an agreement with Chris to come back two days a week for the next year. And what it'll do is afford us, having somebody who has a lot of experience with the department over 20 years, we'll be able to train the next Assistant City Engineer, as well as help with all the design work that we still have backlogged until we have somebody capable of doing that.
Okay, that's great to know, yeah, because Chris is always very helpful. Yeah, thank you. All set, Mr. President?
Counsel Khrushain.
My heart skipped a beat when you said Chris left, and I can only imagine what you're going through, because I have been working, you know, working with him in the past. That's, it's a heartbreak. Is that salary enough for somebody coming in from the outside? Because a lot of times, as you grow in a position with 2%, 3%, 4%, it's not much. But when you're coming from the industry into a new facility, usually there's a higher increase in that income because of the national average.
So I, we did recently, DPW did recently look at wages from surrounding communities comparable to Chicopee. And right now, the, what we have listed for the salary is competitive within the municipal sector.
Right.
So my hope is that we will be able to find somebody qualified that, you know, will fill that position.
Okay, great, thank you.
Counsel Labrie is back on Zoom for the meeting. Okay, any other questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom?
Motion tentatively approved.
Motion made and seconded, tentatively approved. Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zigorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Balakir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Shumsky.
Yes.
Khrushain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
12 yes, 13 yes.
And the motion passes. Next, we'll have page 118, flood control.
So this one is level funded. Salary is contractual, and we maintain the expenses the same from prior year.
Okay, any, you said from the prior year? Okay, yep. Any questions from the floor? Counsel Wagner, you got your hand up? Go ahead.
Yeah, I noticed the flood control advisor that jumped over 100%. Can we just get a little explanation on that?
What did it do?
On page 118, oh, wait, I'm sorry. Is that where we're at? Yeah, 118. The flood control advisor.
What do you mean? But that's what he means. So in the past couple of years, we had been transferring funds to cover that contract. So his contract is, that's, that's what his, we have a retired employee who has stayed on to assist with resolving all of our flood control easement issues with Army Corps. So cleaning up essentially all of our levee property and flood wall property. And he, yeah, that's, he works essentially, sorry.
My apologies.
No, no, it's okay. So based on the information that I have, so we were underfunding it and then transferring funds.
So if we were, the.
In FY, in this fiscal year, we have to, we transferred in $10,000 to cover the difference. We've expended in FY '24, $19,723, so.
Okay.
This new budget is the accurate amount.
All right, yeah, I was just curious, like, if it's a contractual, why have we not before? So glad we're doing it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else on the flood control? Anyone on, no, no, can I wait, hold on. Anyone from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Tentatively approved.
Motion made and seconded, tentatively approved. Roll call, please.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zigorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Balakir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Shumsky.
Yes.
Khrushain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
13 yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you. Next, we'll have up the forestry, page 115.
So so the biggest change here under salaries is that we are adding another entry-level position. I'm sure everybody knows it's hard getting licensed individuals in the door. And so we found that having these entry-level positions and training them in-house, getting, helping them get licenses in-house has been the best way to approach some, some departments. So with forestry, we created a second 4L labor position. So that's where you see the increase in the salary, in salaries. And then on, in expenses, we transferred $1,000, right, $1,000, right? $1,000 from our miscellaneous department supplies line item, which was originally, so a time ago, Parks Department handled Christmas lights. Then forestry took it over, because we were the one, you know, forestry was hanging them. And now Facilities is now taking that over. So that was now transferred to Facilities. So Facilities will be in charge of purchasing lights. We'll still assist in installing them, but they'll be responsible for purchasing and maintaining. And that's, that's the change, those are the changes in forestry.
Counsel Balakir.
Yeah, thank you, Liz. Quick question, page 117, forestry services. Can you shed some light on that? Is that something sometimes, like when we're dealing like with northern, or?
Yep.
Could you shed some light on that, please?
So as you know, like, every year, it seems like storms get stronger. We see higher winds, more severe thunderstorms, rain events. And we don't have all of the equipment suitable for taking down some of these larger trees that require crane work. So the $50,000 covers our costs when utilizing northern tree services to assist with those more difficult removals. And that gets us probably about four, I think, four full days of work from them.
Four full days?
Yeah, quit, you're right, you have to, you're not paying just their labor, you're paying their equipment costs.
Okay. Do you, just to follow up, the $50,000, do you think that's an adequate amount to have, say, in this particular line item? Or do you think, because, as you mentioned earlier, because of the intensity of the storms and some of the bigger trees we have, do you think that's something that needs to be increased, or is this?
No, I think we're confident and Forestry, Chris Scott, City Arborist, he's confident that this is an adequate amount to carry on for next year.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Ariaga.
What are your special services?
Special services. Are you talking, the?
It says $10,000 for special services.
Where is it?
538000.
Oh, that covers the costs of, that's for like police. So when we do tree removals and we require traffic details, that covers like the cost of police, which is expensive.
That's why I asked her if she thinks it's adequate.
Are you all set?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Page 115, the overtime for the forestry went up, doubled. Almost doubled.
Well, it didn't, it's the same as last year.
Yeah, 30,000, it was 16,000.
We had increased it last year, because we were.
Is that, is that enough for overtime?
Yes, this covers, you know, the cost of responding to emergencies and whatnot.
They do a great job. Okay, any other questions? Counsel Wagner.
Yeah, I just had a similar question on departmental equipment on page. Yeah, I just had a similar question on departmental equipment on Page 116. That also went up double in FY '23, and it's sort of remained consistent.
So, departmental equipment, that covers the cost of, like, chainsaws and everything like that. So, every year, you know, you're, you're replacing, you know, they put a lot of wear on this equipment. You're repairing stuff, equipment, you're replacing equipment. And in FY '23, where is that? What was in FY '23? Just the increased costs of everything over the, since COVID, you know. So, in FY '24, we increased it because we, it just wasn't enough. So...
Thank you.
Any other questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to tentatively approve.
Motion tentatively approved.
Motion made and seconded, tentatively approved. Page 102, Highway.
We, we combined a couple of budget line items. We moved pothole repair, which is 524013, and added that 25,000 to asphalt, tar, and cement. It just seemed very redundant. So, that, so the item 553030 was increased. It looks like it's an increase, but it's really not. It's just a consolidating of budget line items. There's a reduction somewhere. Where's the change? Oh. And then, we eliminated, we, zero, unfunded essentially subscriptions. We just weren't utilizing that. It's 558005. It was $500. So, we decreased it there. And that's pretty much the change to Highway.
Counselor Kushein.
Same question. So, with the recent appropriation of $10,000 for signs, level funding the signs enough? Or are we running out of places to put signs and that's why it's level funded?
The reason that we had to do an appropriation is because with all the signs for Westover Road and Caroo Street and East Main Street, that was just a significant number of signs. And so, we, we just, we ran short and we still needed to purchase some more. But, I mean, I think, over the years, that's been, we've been able to, that's been an appropriate number. I just think if there is a significant change or where we're, you know, significant increase, it may need an appropriation. But I, I don't feel like that's going to be an issue again. I mean, that was a unique situation.
Right. And that'll take care of Chicopee Street when we finally get the state to settle things with us? Because there'll be additional signage going up on Chicopee Street.
Yeah. And I mean, if you think about it, too, on Chicopee Street, we may be changing the sign, but we won't necessarily change the post.
Right.
You know, so you're not, it's not the full cost of a new sign with the post.
Counsel Chomsky.
In regards to, I know you just mentioned that taking the sign down and keeping the post. Do we recycle those signs?
What do you mean?
So, you just mentioned that we, we may change the sign but keep the post. Do we recycle the signs that we take down?
Yeah. So, those speed limit signs, we'll keep them in-house. And if there ever a need for them elsewhere, we'll, we'll use them elsewhere. There's no reason to get rid of them.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Costello.
Thank you. Superintendent on Item 578315, it's ROKA Maintenance Services. Is that the ROKA program that your department is using as a supplement to?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, that's the, that's that organization that gives youth an opportunity to, a second chance. They get to work and learn some skills. And they've been really great addition to DPW and I think the city with their litter and assisting. They've always assisted parks with some cleanup, painting, you know. We've utilized them at a lot, several different capacities. They've moved furniture, or moved boxes and furniture. So, yeah, they've been really great asset. And it helps right now, especially when we're short-staffed.
Yeah, I think it's a great program. You know, community services is terrific. But it went up from 45,000 last year to 100,000, still at 100,000. I didn't realize that there was maintenance services fees in that.
So, originally, we only utilize ROKA for a portion of the year.
Yeah.
And only, it was like, once a month, I think, for a few days a week.
Yeah.
And now, we, we get them actually every week, four days a week. So, full, year round. So, you know, this, the 100,000 is negotiated with ROKA for an annual service agreement versus essentially seasonal is what they were doing.
Well, that's good to know. So, you're getting ROKA four days a week? And that's, like, how many hours a day?
The full day. They're the full day, yeah.
Full day? Wow. So, we have ROKA four days a week?
We'll say eight hours a day.
And all year?
All year.
That's good news. Yeah.
They've been great.
Any other, let me look at my paper here. Counsel Balakir, second time.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mr. President. Liz, quick question. Signal maintenance. I know with some of the more sophisticated lighting patterns that we have now, is this adequate enough, this 140,000? Or is that something that we might need to look at down the road?
So, the, good question. Obviously, the cost of equipment goes up. We, a few years ago, we added, we increased it by 100,000 so that we can continue to re, essentially replace full intersections, all of the equipment that was aged and failing. And we couldn't get really any replacement parts. Having an in-house electrician has helped significantly with those costs. For right now, I'm, I met with him and we're confident to maintain this as our budget. If we see the need for increasing the cost, of course, we'll come back. But right now, I don't see a reason why we should increase it.
Okay, thank you. As a follow-up, can we get any help from the state, for example? Like, for example, on Memorial Drive, is that a combination of DOT and City of Chicopee with some of those streets that are mass?
So, Memorial Drive is, is a state road. All of those intersections are state intersections. We do not touch those. So, those are not our intersections.
All right, great. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the floor? Counsel Zigorowski.
Page 104, street striping. Is that enough money to do all the streets?
Say that again?
Street striping, Page 104.
104. I want to know if that's enough money to do all the crosswalks and the streets and everybody that really needs it.
Sorry, can you speak to the microphone?
Street, he's, he's asking about...
Street striping.
Striping.
Do you have enough money with 80,000 to do all the?
Yep, we, we increased, we increased that, I think, last year.
Yes.
So, yes, that's adequate. It's been raining, but we, I believe we have them scheduled, I think, for next week. Maybe next week? Is it next week you said? I think Mike said next week, street striping, line striping?
Long line, but we've been out there already.
Yeah. So, yep, 80,000 has been adequate.
What'd you say about next week?
Next week. They're, they've been working on long line striping, just giving you an update, and crosswalks.
Okay.
Okay, that'll be...
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the floor, questions? Any comments on Zoom? I just want to make a comment at Page 105, the ROKA. Again, this process, and I've seen them out there a lot. But this also, got to understand, this also helps us with the shortage of staffing in the highway, in the bar, DPW, with their staff being short. Down the road, hopefully we won't need ROKA as much. They'll have full positions all filled. But this fills in for now and we don't have to pay the, you know, the extra benefits right now with these people. Or, so, it's a good program and they do get out there and work very hard.
And they also do a lot of the things that we, our staff won't do, like cleaning up homeless camps and stuff. So, it's been a huge help.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Motion tentatively approved.
Motion made, tentatively approved. Roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zigorowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Chomsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniak Costello?
Yes.
13 yes.
And a motion passes. Counsel Chomsky will remove himself for the parks, Page 110.
He doesn't have to leave.
Parks. You have the floor.
Do you want to do it? Or do you want me to do it?
Could you make sure you got a mic, Ben, please?
Yeah, I think that's good.
All right. So, for our salaries, all of these are staying the same except whatever contractual increases we have. And then, most of our budget is level funded from last year. Our one increase is to chemicals, drugs, and lab supplies. And that's for our pool chemicals. Cost of chlorine has gone up quite a bit. So, being able to adequately have enough product on hand for both, both of our pools is huge. And then, we actually had a decrease in our park improvements line item from, we had 45,000 last year to accomplish a couple of projects. And we decreased that down to 10,000 for this year. And then, we also increased our school event salary line item. And that's used when park staff works high school sport games, like football and soccer in the fall. We have staff on for those, so...
Any questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Ben, could you just, you just made, said something about the schools. The school doesn't reimburse you for sending out your staff to work at the schools?
No, we don't work at the schools. These are when they have home, when they have soccer, football games at Zott Park.
Oh, excellent.
We have, yep, we have two staff that work those games. So, this is just covering my staff for those games.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Any questions again from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion tentatively approved.
Motion tentatively approved.
Motion made and seconded, tentatively approved. Roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zigorowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Chomsky is removed. Kushein?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniak Costello?
Yes.
Yes.
And a motion passes.
One removed himself.
One, excuse, okay. Bill, could you make sure he can come back in, please? Okay, then we'll now move on to sanitation, Page 106. You have the floor.
So, salaries, contractual, no changes there. Under expenses, we had to increase repurposed equipment. This is for power washing, decreasing costs, degreasing of our trucks. After we've, in sanitation, after we finish the day, they have to clean everything up. So, just the increased cost of, like, detergents and stuff like that to clean. Then, foul weather gear, we just, with, we added a couple positions, positions last year. And now that we're actually about fully staffed, we needed to increase that line item to cover the cost for foul weather gear. Also, with the nature of their work, their winter gear, rain gear gets really beat up. So, you know, there's additional replacements there. Foul weather gear is a contractual item, so we have to supply it. And then, dump caretaking, oh, wait, hazardous waste collection. We do two hazardous waste collection days a year. That has gone up a little bit. So, we increased that by $5,000. And then, dump caretaking, this is per our contract, our agreement with Republic, based on our, the increase in the tonnage rate. You know, this is accounting for our increased tonnage rate for this next fiscal year, which is contractual.
Counsel Balakir.
Yeah, thanks, Liz. Page 109, again, just some clarification with the dump caretaking. Is that a long-term contract? Or is that a contract which is, like, year to year?
Every three years.
I'm sorry?
A three-year contract.
Three-year contract. So, are...
We renegotiate it every three years.
So, if that's a three-year contract, where are we with that contract? Are we at the beginning? Are we at the end? Do you know?
We negotiated last year. I believe we're going into the second year of that contract.
Okay. Because as, as you noted, it did go up 200,000 from, from last year. So, I didn't know, again, if 200,000 is the number that it would increase potentially in year three? Or if that's a number that still remains to be set?
So, that's based on what our average annual tonnage, you know. So, we negotiate a rate in the contract. So, there's an increase in the rate this coming fiscal year. And based on our annual tonnage, that's approximately what we expect to see. We may not see that, I don't know. But that's the estimation for that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any others? Questions? Counsel Kushein.
Is the tonnage rate, tonnage rate fixed in the contract? Or is it flexible with the market as it's one of those commodities, unfortunately?
For recycling, it's flexible in the contract, right? Based on what the market is on recycling and whatever they can sell. But for, for solid waste, for municipal waste, no. That's, that's a flat rate.
Thank you.
Counsel Costello.
Yes, thanks, President Laflamme. In regards to the sanitation packers, I don't know what, I'm not clear of what a sanitation packer is.
It's, it's, it's the truck.
It's a truck?
Yeah. So, we have side loaders and rear packers. They're just, I think in the line item, it says sanitation packers because historically, they were always called packers. But then, when they came out with side loaders.
Okay.
So, in the, there's a line item for that because in the past, we tried to include it where we just budgeted for it annually because we do need to, we do, we do replace one every year, just based on life, the life of the vehicle and the wear and tear on it. But since COVID, we've been adding it to the capital budget. Unfortunately, we, a lot of the last few years, we've been able to purchase them from yellow bag money. So, so right now, it's not in the budget because it was decided to put it back, keeping it in capital. So, the line item still remains, it's just not funded.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know. Thanks.
Any other questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to tentatively approve.
Motion tentatively approved.
Motion made and seconded, tentatively approved. Roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zigorowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Chomsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniak Costello?
Yes.
13 yes.
And a motion passes. Central Maintenance Garage, Page 92.
So, for central maintenance, salary line items, contractual, so no changes there. Under general expenses, as I mentioned, when we went through the highway budget, we moved $30,000 from, oh, from admin, sorry, from admin budget to central maintenance for lubricants. And so, that is an increase in that line item. So, it's an increase, but not really because we moved it from one budget to the other. So it's an increase, but not really because we moved it from one budget to the other. There's inspection stickers. There's an increase of $3,000 because there's an increased cost in inspection stickers. Foul weather gear increase. Judet, now that we are fully staffed, we have the, you know, there's additional expenses with foul weather gear. And although it's, you don't think about central maintenance needing foul weather gear, but during the winter, or even if it's raining out, one of our vehicles breaks down or plow blade issues, they go out and, so they still require foul weather gear. And that's that. So that's, that's for general expenses.
Any questions from the floor? Consul Balakir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Liz, I know that you guys do a great job on page 95, departmental repairs to vehicles. This line item has pretty much stayed the same at $400,000 the last couple of years. With the increase of supplies in the, in the chain, is this adequate, do you think? Or is this something that we may have to revisit this?
So I meet with all of my department heads when we're looking at budgets. And in talking with Al, he's confident that, you know, that's still an appropriate budget. And he didn't feel like there was a need to increase it at this point.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Consul Wagner.
Hold on one second, my apologies. Okay, yeah, so I'm looking at page, page 97? 97? I'm looking at a couple line items. That special services jumped quite a bit, looking at the totals forward for...
Are you looking at a different budget?
Oh, is it, is it a different budget? Okay, my apologies.
Yeah, we're on central maintenance.
Central maintenance garage.
Okay, yep.
You all set, Tim? Okay, thank you. No other comments? Okay, any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion tenorally approve. Motion made second tenorally approve. Roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zigorowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Krampitz?
Yes.
Chomsky? Crushane?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Pinaya Costello?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And a motion passes. Now we'll move on to water, page 169.
So with water, oh, wait, with this round, we fully funded our positions for water, for salaries. We funded the, all the positions with the exception of one special MEO. Right, Jen? I think that's it, that's, I think we funded. This is, you know, one of those departments, it's compliance, right? And originally, we were, when we had, coming off of COVID, we didn't fund all the positions. One, we've been struggling to fill positions. And two, we had to do a rate increase last July to help accommodate the increase in salaries. So to, to make sure that we were maintaining our budget, we had unfunded positions to help the rate cover the budget. But now we're in a, we're at a point where we really need to start filling all these positions. So the, and the rate, the current rate supports this. So we're, in this next fiscal year, we're funding all of the water positions. Hopefully, we'll fill them all. And it's a compliance one, so DEP has been really pushing on us to get people in place and licensed. We have to submit an annual report showing our staffing. And that's something that we are questioned on, although they are understanding that I think all communities or all water utilities are struggling as well. It's not just Chicopee, it's across the industry. But we continue to push forward and hopefully get these positions filled. Under general expenses, there's, there was, there's an increase to annual fees and assessments. This is DEP's water assessments. We have no control over that. We have a decrease in insurance. This is workman's comp or insurance other? Workman's comp. As of right now, it looks like we went down from $150,798 to $56,996. And that's just due to people coming off workman's comp. Under specials, there's a slight decrease in, for, what's that? Well, I was also going to say the pension came down, pension fund share. There's an increase in employee medical insurance. And then a significant increase by a couple hundred thousand in source of supply. This is our, what we pay MWRA. They recently increased their rate. So that, that increase is due to their rate increase. And that's, that's water.
Thank, Consul Balakir.
Yeah, thank you, Liz. Yeah, the source of supply, that went up $197,000. Can you just explain how that contract works? Is that, is that with Quabin Resources? And is that like a long-term contract, or is that year to year? How does that work, please?
I believe it's a five-year contract. Is that right, Sharon? Five years?
Multi-years.
It's definitely multi-year because it's our, it's our water source. I mean, it's, it's the only source that we have.
Well, correct.
And so, so it's definitely a multi, I'm not sure how many years it is. It's definitely more than three years. It's not, it's one of those that is several years. But they did recently, this, they voted last year for, on an increase, or not last, well, this current fiscal year, they voted for an increase in the water rate. So that's something that all of the communities receive.
So I, I'm just, I'm just curious if, is there like a percentage? Do we know how that works? Is that like a percentage that's tied to volume that, that, that the city uses? And I know you'd mentioned it with several years, but I'm just curious if, how that quite works.
So it's a, so it's just kind of like how we charge water rate, right? It's, it's a rate per volume, right? So per flow, the volume of water that you use. But it's not, it's not that, I think what you're thinking is like a share, like a cost share.
Okay.
But I believe it's just, it's just due to the rate.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion tenorally approve. Motion made second tenorally approve. Roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zigorowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Krampitz?
Yes.
Chomsky?
Yes.
Crushane?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Pinaya Costello?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And a motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to water, bonds, and interest, page 176, 177. You have the floor.
So these are our loan and interest payments for all of our funded water projects over the years that we still have balances on.
Any questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion tenorally approve.
Motion tenorally approve.
Motion made second tenorally approve. Roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zigorowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Krampitz?
Yes.
Chomsky? Crushane?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Pinaya Costello?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And a motion passes. Then we go into 137, recreation, and Consul Chomsky is going to be stepping out of the room. Page 137, recreation, go ahead.
All right, for all of our full-time positions, the increases are just contractual. And as for our seasonal positions, there were no increases. Because we didn't increase anything through chapter seven. The only change we made is we increased the number of weeks that our ranger works so that we can adequately cover the entire summer season from end of April through early October. And this year, we do have two rangers who are doing a great job. So we're hoping to be able to cover all of our parks, especially our picnic areas, which is their main duties. For, the other increase we made was for additional programs. This is to help offset the cost we may incur when we utilize school buildings for any of our programs. We do have to pay a custodial fee, which, depending on how long the program runs, could get up there. We try to work that into our program costs. But if we don't have enough attendees to the program, we still have to pay for use of the school building. So this is to help offset that cost. The other increase is to our license for media usage. That's a yearly fee we have to pay to play music and movies within our parks, and that fee goes up annually. And then we also increased our line item for fireworks. This is more of a placeholder because we have to have the contracts and purchase orders in place prior to when donations may be in. So this money is typically used for that. And then donation money, whenever it comes in, is you, transferred, is transferred into place. So again, this is just a placeholder for us to cover all of our costs for the fireworks if donation money isn't in in time, which I have to give credit to Chloe Soto in the mayor's office, who did an amazing job this year raising enough funds to cover our celebration.
Any questions from the floor? Consul Wagner?
Thank you. I'm looking at the, well, never mind, actually. Looking at it, I think I understand it.
You all set? Consul Costello.
Thanks, President Laflamme. Superintendent, you indicated that there's a juvenile program, and it doesn't go up. And I was wondering, is that type of a community service program?
That's the juvenile delinquency program through the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay.
It's a grant program that the city provides to help keep teens off the streets and out of trouble. And they utilize it for a number of their programs through the Boys and Girls Club. And it's just housed in our recreation budget.
Okay, all right, so it's through the Boys and Girls Club?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Consul Balakir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Superintendent, a quick question. Getting back to fireworks on page 140. We also get donations from some of the financial institutions in the city. So like, for example, you had mentioned the request is for $20,000. But, so we, do we know what we get from financial institutions with that too? Or is that something that changes from year to year? Is that...
I know the mayor's office has changed how they've been soliciting donations for all the city events. I'm not, I'm not sure the exact amount that they get from the, from the banks or other local businesses for this event. Like I said, this is more of a placeholder, just so we can get contracts in place when we start planning fireworks, which typically starts in January. So some of that donation money may not, we may not have received the check yet for it, but I need to have the money in place to do the, to put contracts in place.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the floor? Any questions? Consul Zigorowski.
Ben, on page 137, lifeguard instructors and head lifeguard. To get the pools open properly, are you going to have enough lifeguards? Because every year, that seems to be a problem.
This year, we are, knock on wood, in very good standing with our lifeguards. So we're hoping to have enough staff for the entire summer.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else for a question on the floor? Any questions on Zoom? Ben, car allowance, 139. Who gets the car allowance?
Our assistant superintendent gets a car allowance per their contract for use of his personal vehicle. So when he has to go to events, travel around the city, he has to use his own personal vehicle. Sean Carroll.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Questions? Nope, seeing none? I'll get a motion tenorally approve.
Motion tenorally approve.
Motion made second tenorally approve. Roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zigorowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Krampitz?
Yes.
Chomsky? Crushane?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Pinaya Costello?
Yes.
Twelve yes, one out of, out of chair.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to page 151, sewer, public utilities, and public utilities. You have the floor.
So we, for salaries, we essentially funded the same positions as we did last year. We left some unfunded because, one, we're struggling to fill positions still. And two, I am trying to absorb as much as I can in the budget due to this really struggling financially this past fiscal year with all the just costs of equipment failures and, you know, everything you can think of. You know, we did a not-quite-mid-year rate increase to help with costs. Just operational costs, increased costs of solids, increased costs of chemicals, solids disposal, costs of chemicals, just everything compounded this year. And so we ended up evaluating the rate. The rate was not sufficient to cover operational costs, so we did that rate increase. My hope is that this year, we'll do a better job in getting positions filled as DEP has been seriously hounding us because of the need to have the treatment plant staffed. And so, just like water, we have to submit an annual report with staffing, with our staffing plan and a list of all the open positions and, or staffed positions. And right now, we're still severely understaffed in the wastewater department. So hopefully, we'll see an improvement this year. But that is essentially funded the same as last fiscal year. This year, in general, in expenses, we had a slight increase. We had an increase in insurance, essentially workman's comp. Decrease vehicle insurance. Under specials, we had an increase, increase in pension fund share. We, I guess I'll bring it up, right? And talking with the... And talking with the, where's that?
You're fading away. We're having a hard time hearing you. You're fading away.
Sorry. On page 156, 6,044,14, or six, I'm sorry, not that, 6,450,05. Admin local share. Due to the financial constraints of the department, I asked the mayor if he'd be in agreement to, for this, for one fiscal year, to waive our admin local share to help stabilize the department for this next budget, budget year. So we took, for this year, next year waived, we requested a waiver of $240,643.73.
Yeah. I'd like you to explain that.
So the...
You want her to?
Sharon can. The admin local share is essentially wastewater's portion of the costs associated with City Hall, running, you know, contracts, payroll, all that purchasing. It's essentially...
Law Department, processing bills.
Yes. Essentially, our portion of those costs.
The city incurs for the sewer department.
Yeah.
So we are, by law, we can charge them an admin local share because they're supposed to be a self-supporting department. They've had a rough year where they have no surplus at the end of FY '23. We're hoping '24 is going to be better. But bottom line is, if they don't break even, they're subsidized by the general fund anyway. So why would we fund an admin local share that they may not be able to meet in their budget? It'll affect us setting our tax rate. It really slowed us down last year because of the rate not being sufficient. So it was decided for one year and one year only that we'd waive the admin local share fee, cost that they would pay the city in the hopes that they could get more stable and get back on track and start building a little bit of a surplus.
And our revenue, when we looked at our revenue recently, it looks like we're, fingers crossed, we are going to be okay closing out this fiscal year. But as Sharon mentioned, we have no surplus. And so this is to help kind of build up that surplus so that when issues arise that we can, you know, we're not figure, trying to figure out where in the budget we're going to pull money from, you know?
Okay. I understand that. But so who's picking up the tab now? General Fund?
Well, there is no tab. The bottom line is all those departments in, in the general fund auditing, treasurers, purchasing, law department, they're funded by the tax levy anyway.
Okay.
But we were just going to charge them a portion of what we do for them, a percentage of their budget based on the grand total budget, which we, which we, which we do. But the law, Master General Law says that you charge that if they have a surplus. They don't have a surplus.
Gotcha.
They don't have anything to pay it with.
Which is, can't shut it down.
Exactly.
Can't shut it down. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? We'll start with Susan Goff. Counsel Goff.
Meter in, on page 156, meter and support equipment. Could you shed some light on that? What that is?
So that is for, so wastewater and water share the cost for the AMI program. And right now, we've suspended all movement on that due to our issues with Honeywell, who we have a contract with. Law Department is involved, and we're trying to actually get out of our contract because they have not been able to fulfill their obligations under the contract. And so since we haven't been, we have ceased ordering meters and modules through that program, we, for this year, we're just not carrying that in the budget since we're not buying any right now.
And those are the water meters that go inside the homes?
The, it's, it's the meters that are part of the, that automated metering program. So the newer meters that were supposed to go into place that help, that would allow residents to monitor their, their usage in real time. Honeywell has not kept up with their end of the contract. And so right now, we're actually working to try to get out of our contract with them so that we can pursue a different avenue. So right now, on the wastewater side, on water, we buy meters because we have to replace them. If they don't, if they're, you know, we break meters, we break meters. But this was wastewater's portion of that investment. So but because we're not pursue, we're not moving forward right now with the AMI because of this contract issue, wastewater doesn't have to provide their portion of, of the investment because we're not, right now, we're not doing anything with the AMI program. We're trying to get out of our contract and pursue a different AMI format. We're actually trying to go cellular. It seemed, we, we did a test area, and that seems to be really great and works really well. But we can't do it until we're out of the Honeywell contract.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Balakir is next.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. Liz, quick question. Page 154, special services, line item of $200,000. Can you shed some light as to what that is, please?
Special services, where is that? 154, oh, right here. So that's lab testing and billing fees. So we, obviously, we have to, we do a lot of sampling. And with our new permit, we have to actually increase our sampling of our affluent and affluent and during the entire process through the plant. And so this is just, this is the cost to send it out to a lab because we have to also, we have to send it out to a lab. We do some in-house testing for immediate, like BOD and TSS and stuff like that. But then for other, like bacterias and stuff, we have to send it out to a lab. And then for billing, so water puts out the bills, but there are also wastewater bills. So it's a combined effort.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. It's the, the printing of the bills. They print and mail them out.
All right. Thank you. One other quick question. Page 155, insurance other, looks like this has more than doubled. So could you shed some light on that, please?
That's the workman's comp. So we've had, unfortunately, we had some injuries at the plant, so that's increased workman's comp.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. All set, Mr. President?
Counsel Chomsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Superintendent. I have a question on page 156 on the line item that says Bluebird Acres Connect Fees. It shows a decrease in $10,000. I was kind of curious as to what that was for.
So Bluebird Acres has so many units. And so every year, we, so they haven't actually, so we have an agreement with the town of Ludlow, and they have a connection fee, right? And part of the agreement with Bluebird Acres, with the Grock Malls, is that they have to pay a portion of the loan and then a portion of the fees associated with connecting to the town. The Grock Malls, the owners of Bluebird Acres, they have to continue to connect. So as they connect services to the new pump station, we have to pay a fee to Ludlow. And we've, we haven't, we haven't been having to, and we reduced, I don't know if we've, we haven't, we haven't... A small payment, right? It's only $10,000. But so we, we're, we're making payments as they're doing, making connections, but they're not connecting as many per year as we thought they were going to.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Costello?
Thank you, President Laflambeau. Superintendent, going back to the water meters, I think last year, we had a, a meeting about water meters and the Honeywell honeymoon, I mean Honeywell meters. There were some meters on a shelf. They were shelves. I can remember they weren't being used. Is that still the case?
Originally, we tried to make sure, so when I'm dealing with contracts like this, I like to make sure that even though one party is not fulfilling their end of the contract, I wanted to be able to demonstrate that we were continuing to fill our end of the contract. So we were making the orders. We were actually, you know, making, taking, putting in orders for meters to make sure that they couldn't say, well, the city wasn't ordering meters, therefore, we weren't supplying them. And what was happening was there was a significant delay in receiving meters. And then finally, it got to a point after just struggling with just their communication, lack of communication, and dealing with their sales department and not getting anywhere, we decided, we finally got to the point where we involved the law department and said, okay, we're not ordering any more meters. So we've since stopped, but we did, we did have a surplus of meters just because we had ordered them. But we actually couldn't install them because we also needed the modules, which is the device that sends the signal to the grid, that, the grid that Chicago Electric Light installed to collect all that.
Okay. We got to stay, we got to, we got to stay on track. That's a, that's not a budget question. So we got to stay on budget questions, okay?
Yep. Okay.
I was waiting to see if you were talking about the expense of that. That's what it was.
Well, so yeah. So then what we did was we stopped ordering meters, hence, you know, but yes, we have some on the shelf still, which we do utilize.
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else for questions on the floor? Counsel Wagner?
Thank you, Superintendent, Mr. President. I have a couple of questions on a few lines here. Page 151, the expense for the senior pump station operator. I mean, that's, that's gone up pretty exponentially over the last couple of years. Is that something that's contractual?
Yes. That's contractual. That's contractual. So that's step increases and annual increases that are negotiated via the contract.
So there's an additional increase that's negotiated every year?
So there's a wage schedule with each contract, with each union contract. So that, that person that's in that position was, had started probably three years ago. And so he started at a step one, went up to a step two, three, four.
So I understand how the contract, okay.
There's step increases, but on top of those step increases, annually, there's a COLA, Cost of Living Adjustment, that's negotiated into the contract. And this last contract was a 2-2-3. So this last year, going to this fiscal year, it's a 3% increase across the base.
Okay. Thank you. Similar question for the maintenance supervisor. I assume that's contractual plus cost of living?
Yeah. All the salaries are contractual.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? I'll take a motion intently approve. Motion made in second and ten only approve. Roll call.
President Laflambeau?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zegarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Chomsky? Cruzane?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniak Costello?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And the motion passes. Now we'll go to page 159, Collection Systems.
Oh, shoot.
You have the floor.
So Collection Systems, I forget that these are all individual. So Collection Systems salaries are contractual. Let me see. Collection Systems. And then we level funded expenses.
All set? Any questions from the floor? Any questions? Counsel Balakir?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah. Just a quick question, Liz, in terms of accounting, gas, oil, city pumps, that's the same thing that you did because in 2023, you had a line item of $10,000, and since then, you've had zero. So that was consolidating or combining that into the other, the system that you had, correct?
Yes. We did that last year.
Okay. All right. Because I, I didn't see any line item change. I just wanted to make sure. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion intently approve.
Motion intently approve.
Motion made in second and ten only approve. Roll call.
President Laflambeau?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zegarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Chomsky? Cruzane?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniak Costello?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And the motion passes. 157, Pretreatment.
So it's level funded.
What's that?
It's level funded. There's no, no changes to that.
He can't hear you.
It's level funded. Sorry.
Yeah. You've, it's, it's not you. It's these mics. Okay. Any questions for the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion intently approve.
Motion intently approve.
Motion made in second and ten only approve. Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zegarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Chomsky? Cruzane?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniak Costello?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And the motion passes. Combined Sewer Overflow, 162.